Pat, Mr. Otto, Mr. Wayman.
Here.
Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Satherthwaite.
Here.
Next, we have any additions to the agenda? Do you know of any?
Just wanted to let folks know that Mr. Otto called last week and said he was going to be out of town today, so we're doing business in Crane or something like that.
Available.
Yes, 2,000 miles away.
Okay, so there are no additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, staff report?
None, I have.
Next, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second? A second, are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have public input. I don't have any cards from members of the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to address the committee tonight? Yes? Okay, you need to combine up. There's -- you don't. Okay.
It's like to welcome some of our guests in the audience tonight from Shandong Province in China. A lot of them are governmental officials there, and they're here on an extended visit, learning about how we do things here in the United States. So, welcome to the city council chambers tonight.
We have ordinance number 2,003-07-074, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. Consultant for landfill remediation, Mr. Gray.
Good evening. Wanted to briefly update the committee on the status of the landfill remediation project in process. In the last several weeks, we have received requests for proposals from consultants in the region to respond to coming up with a remediation plan at the landfill. We had staff members from Urbana Public Works and University of Illinois go through the qualification-based selection process of coming up with what we felt was the best consultant to do the project. And we have come up with a firm from Chicago named Geo-Cyntec. We then put together -- we had a scope of work, and we met with them on two occasions and had some phone conversations to address all our concerns regarding their background and qualifications and references and approach to the project. And we're, as a team, very comfortable with this firm and feel they're very competent in addressing the problem at hand, and particularly looking out for our limited dollars in addressing this process. They thoroughly understand that charge. So, we do have a scope of work and contract provided. It's a shade under $100,000 to do the work necessary that they've identified. The -- if you would like, I can go into those details of the scope of work, but with the -- before we can really proceed, we did an accounting of the costs that we've incurred to date at the landfill. And we need to consider a budget amendment for an amount of $78,560 to consider all those fees. Attached in the memo is kind of an accounting for all the expenses to date, and if there's any questions on those. We have done quite a bit of tree removal work so far. We've not completed all the tree removal work at the landfill site, keeping the trees on the banks, slope area of the saline branch intact until we're closer to doing a plan for remediation there. For -- we're doing this for erosion control purposes, but there's been some water sampling analysis that you all are aware of, and containment supplies, which is basically the booms that we have out on the -- that float on the stream bank to -- on top of the stream, I should say, to absorb any pollutants that may be on the surface of the water and such. But Schneider Geosciences, our consultant at the landfill complex, and he's worked with us. You've met him to date analyzing. He's got the best understanding of the hydrogeology of the landfill complex. So, anyway, looking ahead here, we're anticipating up to $78,000 more dollars needed to proceed with the consultant to do his work. And just to preface it, this doesn't include the actual remediation construction work, which we would hope would be going on starting next spring/summer timeframe, 2004. And it does not also include the culvert pipe in the Batzal ditch, which we have a lot of exposed refuse from the old landfills there, and that needs to be covered. And to do so, we need to do that in a large diameter culvert pipe. And that work is being designed in-house with our engineers, and at some later dates here, we'll be coming to you with those costs and a subsequent budget amendment for that work. So, I'll stop at this point and try to answer any questions.
Questions from committee? Ms. Chellis.
Yes, I just want to understand the numbers. If we look at the page after the memo, the itemization, there's a total of 161.7. Is that basically what we've paid so far? I mean, what we've kind of allocated so far plus what we would need to go to do the planning? Or is that above and beyond what the kind of -- it's been about 100 grand that we've done so far? I'm just trying to figure out what all of that includes. Does it include things that have been done so far, or is this all future allocation?
It's all future allocation. Expenses to date through June 30th have been $60,200. We anticipate, you know, another 161 or so thousand dollars in future expenses, so.
Okay. And so, this would --
Let me correct that.
161 -- roughly 162K is still for planning purposes? And then we get to -- and to map out a strategy for remediation?
Yes.
Is that correct? And then, if I could be reminded, we originally budgeted $150,000 for remediation this last budget?
To date, yes.
Okay. And then just last question is, we have $100,000 for the consultant fees. Over what time period are we looking at that? Is that a year?
Less than a year.
Your commitment?
The work that they plan to do, which includes plans and specification preparation, so all the way up to awarding a bid to someone, we're probably looking a little less than a year from now. So, I would cuff it more in a nine-month timeframe or so.
Okay. And we are just undertaking the planning contract with this particular consultant. We would then open it up again to -- for implementation, and would the consultant follow through? Would they be involved through the next phase, I guess, of the project?
The construction phase, you mean?
Construction.
They would -- we would probably try to do as much as we can on the construction They would probably have a role during construction also, but it would not be -- I would anticipate us to be mostly be the full-time in-the-field inspectors and watching over the type of construction that would be done.
Okay.
It would not be solely them. So, we would -- and again, that would be a -- first of all, unless there's something very unique, I think we would be able to watch that and follow through with the plans and specifications and save dollars that way, too.
So, are we --
But it does not include this less than, you know, this $100,000 contract does not include construction services.
Yeah, I understand that. Are we anticipating consultant fees of this size next year? In the construction phase of the project?
It's hard to say, but I would say probably not. I mean, again, where construction phase fees get pretty high is when you have field representatives there every day, eight, 10 hours a day, five, six days a week. That gets very expensive, and that's the type of fee I want to avoid and have our people in the field doing that kind of work.
So, the consultant fees that are here, the $100,000, does that include daily interaction?
No, this is strictly Geo-Cyntec and some of their subconsultants that will be doing some drilling and testing and that sort of thing. But there really is no -- there's staff liaison, staff, you know, interaction, but no, we're not doing any of this technical engineering work, no.
But the $100,000 pays for the engineering consultants to be working on a fairly regular -- to be working on a daily basis on this project over the next nine months?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Mr. Wayman?
Well, the -- these people, Geo-Cyntec, are going to prepare an analysis for us? Is that it? And tell us what has to be done? The construction, then, is going to be in-house or some of it or all of it?
The construction inspection would be.
Construction inspection?
Uh huh.
So, the construction will cost more?
Absolutely, yeah. No, a contractor would be hired, correct. And we would go out for bids. Once they develop the plans and specifications, we would go out for bids, presumably award a contract to a contractor. And I think what I was hearing earlier is we would be supervising the construction inspection.
How -- do you have any idea how major an operation this will be? I mean, what are we talking about? Preparing walls of any kind?
Yeah, we don't have that planned yet, so I can't answer that at this time, but we'd have a real good idea toward the end of this year where we're heading.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Complete it, and the other contractors are going to be hired to complete the job. You got an idea what kind of guarantees we're going to have? We're not going to run into other kinds of problems.
I guess it's too early to answer that question. I mean, we haven't totally identified the problem, so we don't have the solution, so I can't say what the guarantees are, so.
I hate to spend this kind of money with the consultants and then get the contractors and then, you know, when they complete the job, then a couple of years down the road, we run into the, you know, same kind of situation.
I think, you know, this firm's track record, which we checked out thoroughly, is very good, and their interaction with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, which is critical, is very good. And all that we can tell is their solutions to various similar problems have been solutions that have been there for the long term, so. Yeah, I think that's -- no matter who you select, you're selecting them based on their expertise, that they're going to come up with a problem-solving solution that's most cost-effective for us, and that was what was tops in our minds in choosing this firm.
Other questions? Ms. Chellis.
I have an additional question, which is, I'm trying to figure out whether or not our plan is a patch or an overall assessment and fixing of the landfill. So, we have a particular problem we've identified. We're looking at that problem, and we're going to address the problem. But does this mean that five years or 10 years down the line, there's a possibility of the landfill springing another leak, so to speak? I mean, are we looking to basically contain the landfill at, you know, 2003 standards that just didn't exist when it was originally created? Or are we looking at putting a patch on this particular problem?
We've had this question and discussion with them, and we're going to be -- we, the city and the consultants, are going to be very careful in certainly solving the problem that we know today, doing enough exploration, probing, what have you, to define the extent of the problem. We're not going to go out thousands of feet beyond where we think the problem is to try to uncover something else somewhere. So, it's going to be an effective solution to what we know is the problem and not go, you know, well beyond where we think the problem is. Now, is that being short-sighted? I don't think so. And we think we've got a fairly isolated stretch of bank here that we need -- stream bank that we need to look at. But on the other hand, they're going to do enough investigation out there that if we've got other locations that are, you know, weeks or months or, you know, a year away from bursting forth other seeps or something, I mean, they're going to let us know that, too. So, it's kind of a double answer to your question. It is, yeah, we're going to certainly -- we have to address what we have. Whatever we come up -- whatever plan we come up with has to satisfy the EPA, but we're not going to go well beyond, above and beyond, you know, where we have to go either, so.
So, the maybe a more target -- it sounds like it's mostly a patch with a little bit of foresight into looking around for other potential problems in the very immediate future. I mean, one year is very immediate. We're not talking 10 or 20 years. Is there any plan for them to do an assessment of the stretch of bank? And I can't remember how long that stretch is.
Generally, they're going to walk the entire bank. It's 3,000 or so feet long. I don't have the map right in front of me, but again, they're going to certainly visually assess, you know, the whole stretch there. But their target, you know, in-depth probing, and there's various devices they use to try to determine what may be, you know, in the landfill area, you know, they're going to kind of start in that area where the most -- where the seeps have been found and work from there.
Mayor Satherthwaite?
Yeah, this is very similar to what we do in monitoring the landfill on the surface. And, you know, Mr. Fletcher and our staff and the consultants that we hire monitor the cap of the landfill all the time. And from time to time, we discover various degrees of erosion on the cap. You find erosion, then you have to go in and figure out what -- how to put that cap back in place and keep it from eroding again. Well, this is very similar, only it's on the side of the bank of the saline rather than the surface cap. And so, when we find that the stream has eroded enough of the bank away to get close enough to the landfill to have some seepage into the stream, then we have to find out what's the best way to cap it. It's, of course, different than putting a cap on the surface because you're talking about a stream bed. And so, one of the possibilities is when they discover where the source of the contamination is and put a wall along that portion of the saline to keep the contaminant in the landfill and out of the stream. And so, this is a -- I mean, it's different because it's the stream bank rather than the cap, but it's the same kind of process that we've been using in monitoring the landfill since it closed. In fact, before it closed, because there was a cap on the landfill, parts of the landfill before it closed.
So, you're saying that the stream bank will now be monitored on a regular basis as well?
Well, yes. But they're going to be doing most of that. Trying to isolate where the problem is within the landfill. And they talk about a plume, if there's a source of contamination and water getting into the landfill and then watching this contamination -- it gets into the landfill at high water levels and then washes the contamination into the stream during low water levels, when the water runs back out. And so, try to identify where that source of contamination is and by identifying where the plume is. And so, that's what they're going to be doing.
Other questions? Motion would be in order?
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See that next week. Next, we have ordinance number 2,003-07-075, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a right-of-way in the city of Urbana, 706 South Glover. Who's handling this? Mr. Gray.
If the address sounds familiar, it is. It's our Public Works Center. One of the sidewalk improvement locations this year is along the east side of Glover, basically from Oregon Street to Washington Street. And this is a -- having worked out there and seeing the foot traffic, it's a pretty heavily used, especially for schoolchildren to and from Prairie School. But anyway, this has been identified as one of the sidewalk improvement locations. And in trying to fit the sidewalk into the east side of the right-of-way there, and it's kind of an unusual layout of the street itself, it's offset to the east a little bit, which kind of complicates the location for sidewalk. But anyway, there's a bit of right-of-way that we're recommending we would -- excuse me, a bit of land that the city owns that we'd recommend dedicating as right-of-way. And this would allow the sidewalk to be constructed well off the street there and safely, and it would link up to the north and to the south well, too. So, to go through the formality of the process for consideration by council, there's a right-of-way dedication document attached along with an ordinance of such. And if there's any questions, be happy to answer that. It's a six-foot wide strip of land.
Ms. Wyman?
I have two questions. One is, will there be curb cuts on those streets? The sidewalk connect?
Well, there exists some driveways now. For example, there are two that serve our Public Works Center.
And -- but the sidewalks do doubt -- will be continuous from Oregon to Washington? Is that right?
Yes, be one continuous sidewalk, yes.
And the sidewalks, when they go into the streets, will -- or is it -- are there no streets that go through? Is that right?
No, correct.
Okay.
There's no streets.
And the next question was just in reference to your statement that there are a lot of schoolchildren that go by. I'm wondering if there's thought to making the sidewalks wider than the six feet, especially if there's schoolchildren not only walking, but also perhaps rollerblading, riding their bikes, something that might call for perhaps a wider path?
We are recommending a pretty standard four-foot-wide path that's fairly consistent in that neighborhood and on Washington Street, actually, even to Prairie School. And although, yes, we do acknowledge there's a lot of foot traffic that goes through there, you know, students, et cetera, I wouldn't necessarily call this a location that would be a multi-use situation. I think a four-foot walk should be adequate for the need here.
Thank you.
Other questions? Not a motion, be in order?
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Not all those in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Post, we'll see that next Monday. Next, we have ordinance number 2,003-07-076, an ordinance vacating a portion of Elm Street and a portion of this alley. Mr. Gray.
This is a little bit of unfinished business, and with the Champaign County Courthouse project, we had a couple parcels that we had not vacated, and at the time, we didn't do it. The county acquisition of the Eli Diner property and where the billboard used to be were not completed at that time. We thought we would wait until the physical removal of the billboard had occurred. Of course, the Eli Diner has been moved since, and those two items have occurred. Of course, the county does have title to those parcels. And as part of our commitment in the city-county agreement, we said we would vacate these last two parcels, which are identified in the exhibit one is -- or exhibit A is parcel 10, parcel 11. In turn, today, we received a draft, and the Champaign County Board will be considering soon a dedication of a strip of land, which is parcel 12, to the city. So, there's a little bit of a land swap here, but it's parcel 12 will help complete the right-of-way we need for Vine Street, which is where there'll be a sidewalk in that area. And if you've been by there recently, they're getting closer to preparing for the parking lot work, paving and such. Still a bit of work to go, but this is just a kind of loose-end item we need to take care of.
Ms. Wyman?
I have a few questions. So, will all of parcel 12, it appears to be 32 feet, is all of that going to be sidewalk or part of it sidewalk, part of it grassy area? How is that going to work?
For the -- I believe the sidewalk is adjacent to the back of curb, so will there be a grass parkway? The answer is no. But behind the sidewalk, of course, there'll be some green space, you know, in the parking lot area, and there's islands and such there. But this is just a sliver, Miss Parcel 12, to be consistent with what was dedicated to the city north of there and actually matching up with, you know, kind of evening out that west right-of-way line, so.
Okay. And then, in reference to, I think, the city and county agreement, there was -- they were supposed to have the parking lot ready by the time the sweet corn festival occurs. Is that still on schedule, or what are we looking at?
It will not be ready for sweet corn, is the best information we have. There were various delays in completing that that were beyond the contractor's control, as far as I know. Dexter Sweet Corn, yes, but not this year.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Chellis.
I have two questions. One is, how many -- is there a -- I don't remember seeing an image of what it's going to look like with the parking lot. I wonder how many spaces are allocated to this lot? Do you know?
There's over 100. The exact number, I'd have to get back to you on.
And do you know if they are basically complying with very -- have there been any variations on setbacks or landscaping or anything from our general code on parking lots, et cetera? Is there going to be some kind of setback? Is there going to be some greenery? I mean, I was not on council at the time that this was decided, and actually, if I had been, I would have pushed for some different things to happen, like not putting a billboard in our downtown. But I think of this as a -- as an entry point into downtown, and what I see is that there's basically a sea of parking lot that people will be met with when they come into -- they pass Schnucks and they come to turn on Main Street. Is there any plans for landscaping, beautification, welcome signs, entryways at all on that corner? Or are we just looking at another sea of parking lot?
There will be, I don't know how many dozen trees planted around the entire complex and in the parking lot island areas. There will be, of course, green spaces and such in the parking lot areas to soften the sea of asphalt, if you will. And that's, you know, per our zoning ordinances and codes that way. With respect to variances or what have you, I would have to go back to the original agreement and documentation. I mean, there was planned commission meetings and, you know, council meetings on how this whole complex was situated and footprinted, but I do know that these commitments of vacating each portion of an alley and street were made in order to allow them to size the parking lot to the size they needed to have. We didn't need Elm Street right-of-way as wide as it currently is, you know, based on all our traffic flows and what have you. We will be resurfacing Elm Street next year when all the work is done, and it's basically going to be a three-lane cross-section, an east and westbound lane and a center left-turn lane, because there'll be a lot of left-turning to the various parking lots there. They did cooperate with the streetscape sidewalk work and all that work. They cooperated very nicely with the event power supplies that we'll be able to use their parking lots for. We'll have large power supply locations for exhibitors and whatnot for future events, whether it's sweet corn or other events. And, yeah, the landscaping aspect hasn't been completed. It's typically the end when all the paving and curb and concrete work is done, so I don't recall if there was a color rendering or what have you with all the landscaping and trees. There might be that we can pull out and show you.
I would like to request that for next council meeting, that we see a picture of the footprint of this parking lot. And with any -- and with any rendering of a location of landscaping, et cetera. And with, hopefully, one of my questions will be what kinds of areas does the city have control over? I assume it's just going to be that's the tiny number 12, but we may have some control over the area on Main Street as well.
Well, Main Street, within the right-of-way, we do. And to help soften all the hardscape out there, I mean, with the work we're currently doing, we have tried to pull in the curb line some. And we're adding on the north side some green areas. And there'll be a lot of landscaping in front of the UC Plaza and the jail area, too. So that's going to be softened better than what was there in the past. So in time, you're going to see trees and landscaping occurring. So it won't be quite as much that we currently have, which is still construction mode, if you'd ask me.
So is it possible to get that for next week?
Yeah. In our files, we'll pull out what we have and be happy to share that with you.
Ms. Siewick?
I want to just remind council members that even though we can take a look at the site plan for the parking lot and look at landscaping, that it would be inappropriate for us to make any additional requirements of the county. This is a contractual obligation that we have with a development agreement with the county for the courthouse improvements here in downtown Urbana. And it's, it would not be appropriate to hold this up and demand additional landscaping or additional requirements, because this is part of an agreement that was passed some time ago. So we're contractually obligated to perform. But it's certainly not a problem to see it. But it would be inappropriate to make any additional demands of the county.
Ms. Chenoweth?
I just wanted to clarify that I haven't made any statement this evening about holding up the plans or standing in the way of this. I think that any time that we're looking at plans before us, we have an opportunity to have input. And from what I hear from Mr. Gray, landscaping is actually something that's decided at the end of a project. And it may not be that every single location of shrub and tree and green spaces is decided at this point. That's something I would like to know. And certainly, this council could make a request to the county to consider some, our desires for the way in which we create an entryway into our downtown, which, as all council members know, is one of, is the heart and soul of our community. So I don't think that asking these questions is inappropriate at all. And I certainly am not, I understand the contractual obligations that are before us.
Ms. Wyman?
Yeah. I just wanted to add on to some of the questions that have been brought up. I realize with, you know, that we're certain, the city's certainly grateful to have the courthouse expansion occur in downtown rather than in Brookins, which is one of the things that could have and probably would have happened had the city not agreed to certain contractual obligations, including moving the billboard out of its current locate, or out of its previous location to about a block away. But I'm wondering, adding on to some of the questions and ideas that Ms. Chenoweth had brought up about the beautification of the area, if the area that, I think it's lot number, not lot, but space number 12 that you had identified, if that's going to be, if there's going to be some, the brick sidewalk beautification area, if there's going to be places on the poles for banners that I guess the downtown business association would take care of? And perhaps what money has been allotted from the downtown TIF to be able to help out with some of the shrubbery or other sorts of beautification to complement whatever the county's doing? Or if the county doesn't plan to do as much greenery as the city might like, if we're able to kind of blend or work with them to make it a nice entrance way? And I don't know if you've got those answers now, or if you want to think about it and, you know, let us know down the line?
I could have been prepared for that this evening. I just didn't have it. But we, believe me, we worked with the county and the architect and the landscape architect to come up with a plan and tree species selection and what have you. And, you know, that's completed. I'll pull that out and provide it for you. But yes, the land, the streetscape work is almost completed. You may recall, we committed to pay up to, I think, $250,000 around the entire block for that work. They would do the basic concrete sidewalk work. We would pay the intricate, the extra cost to do it in streetscape fashion. And so I'll provide this landscaping plan. And so you'll be able to look at that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Not a motion would be in order?
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval?
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor, please add?
Aye.
Close. We'll see that next week. Last up, we have ordinance number 2,307-077, an ordinance vacating a portion of Boydin Street between Oakland Avenue and Thompson Street. Mr. Gray?
Okay. Boydin Street was part of the commitment that the city had identified in the recent Town and Country Agreement with the Town and Country apartment owners. And Boydin Street, and you can tell by the recent aerial photography here, is basically an unapproved street between Thompson and Oakland Avenue. There are only two property owners that have property adjacent to this. And one is Town and Country, of course. The second being Mr. Bender, who's owner of the Bender Mattress Company and also owner of the building immediately north of, actually, the two properties immediately north of that, which would be 1208 B and C and North Cunningham, and then 609 Thompson Street. So there are just two property owners. Both the property owners are very supportive of seeing this right-of-way vacated and understanding that certain portions would be, if it vacated, would be, that's 25-foot right-of-way would be split in half, and half would go to each adjacent property owner. I know that for the potential development for Town and Country, their architect is going to consider use of that particular right-of-way in the location of the apartments that they plan to build. That's a factor that they're considering now. And for the city and public works, we don't have any plans for a street there. There really is no need for any accessway for a street to be there. It would certainly remove the occasional dumping that occurs that we've got to go in and clean up or, you know, any kind of mess like that that falls on our shoulders and remove that liability for our case. So from a public works director's standpoint, we would be supportive of this street, you know, being vacated.
Questions? Not a motion? Do you have a question or a motion? Go for it. Remove approval? Second? Motion and a second. Send this to council next week with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. We'll see that next week. Ms. Wyman?
I have one question, all of, from Mr. Gray. All of us got on our table today, I think, a letter from Palasana Balgopal of 204 East Willard attaching a petition signed by 64 individuals, most of whom are residents of Urbana, requesting installation of a stop sign on Windsor at the intersection of Windsor and Vine Street. And I'm sure you've been made aware of this. And I'm wondering if this is something that Traffic Commission is going to address? And my understanding, or my impression is, when these requests have come forward, that it's, that there has to be some sort of measurements that are taken or something like that? If you could explain that again to us and?
Mm-hmm. What we would do is, we would do intersection traffic signal warrants to see if warrants are met before we would, you know, make a recommendation to signalize an intersection. This particular intersection has had a study performed by the transport traffic engineer at Kewatz, I believe about two or three years ago, and a thorough study done then. And we in-house did a thorough study back in probably '95 when the park was first open, you know, based on similar concerns. And, you know, we can still revisit and look at, you know, accident data and traffic volumes and gaps that are available at that intersection to see if anything has changed from two or three years ago. But generally speaking, I'm not aware of, from a safety standpoint, any accidents, you know, that have occurred, which is, would come to our attention.
And so it has to meet certain state standards before there's a stop sign installed?
That's what we would follow, yes.
Okay. And just one follow-up question is, my recollection is that there is a pedestrian path, a walkway, across Windsor? Is that, is that accurate, if I'm remembering right?
Correct. There's a multi-use path along the south side of Windsor. And in the park itself, there's quite a nice park system, path system.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I misspoke. What I meant was crossing the street. There's a?
Oh, striped crosswalk, yes.
Striped crosswalk. And so motorists are required under the rules of the road to stop when someone is in that path. Is that correct?
Yield to pedestrians, yes.
Okay. I guess I don't see that always happening. And so I think a lot of people aren't aware of that. All right. Thank you.
Just to add to that, twice we've looked at this, and I can remember in great detail, including the state warrants. But I would bring to your attention that of the 64 names on this petition, 30 are from as far away as Tennessee. You wonder, I mean, of course, the concern is valid, as you can see, crossing that street. The first problem was created by putting the park right across that busy street. And that couldn't be corrected.
Ms. Chenoweth?
I have two, I have two questions upon seeing this. One is, and hearing your responses to Ms. Wyman, one is, is there anything that legally prevents us from putting a stop sign at this location despite traffic patterns?
Okay. Now, are we talking traffic signals or stop signs, I guess?
It's, a stop sign is what the request is, although I would like?
Again, we, at least staff recommendations are always to recommend warranted stop signs, warranted traffic signals. Can the city council pass an ordinance putting a stop sign on Windsor Road? Yes, they can.
Okay. Then my second question is, is there, there's a striped crosswalk, and there's probably some kind of penalty for people not stopping at the crosswalk when pedestrians are in the crosswalk, some significant fine? Is that correct?
I would defer to Chief Hader on that question.
So I guess my question is, what, if a police officer stops somebody running through a crosswalk when, say, children are crossing the street to get to the park, what are they, what's their ticket look like?
It would be, yes, that would be a violation of the traffic code. The exact fine, I cannot tell you.
Okay. Is it possible, could we consider something, even though it doesn't meet a certain threshold in terms of staff's, you know, suggestion of a stop sign, that we could put a sign up that says, "Stop when pedestrians are in crosswalk, $200 fine", whatever the fine is, the dollar figure of what the fine is if you're, if you don't do this? I've seen this throughout the United States. It might be a way in which to actually step up enforcement of what we already have existing rather than adding a stop sign if staff doesn't concur that that's a good idea.
We can look into that and see. I guess sometimes you have to kind of ask, you know, just what is the specific issue or problem there? And sometimes when I try to get down to that with an individual, well, I wait too long before I can cross the street safely. And then we need to define, well, how long do we have to wait? And when we define that, it's not 10 minutes, it's not five minutes, it may be a minute or two, and that many times is even longer. I don't want to diminish the fact that a five-lane roadway section can be a daunting situation for children and a mother. I mean, that's, that's not a real good situation. But there are, as we have done previous studies, there are gaps frequent enough and long enough that generally allow, you know, for that safe crossing. And I think we've seen, you know, safe crossings. You may have to wait some amount of time.
Ms. Penn?
We've, I think, informally among us discussed this several times because the issue's been raised by some people. And I think there are two, there are two conflicting interests here. And one is that, as Mr. Gray said, there are people who get to that corner, want to cross, and are concerned about the traffic or don't want to wait more than a few seconds. The other is all the people who drive down the road, and there is a stop at Philo and a stop at Race. And so to have everyone who goes down Windsor stop at Vine when the majority of the time there are no pedestrians crossing isn't necessarily the best way to approach this. And a light reduces the need for everyone to stop, but costs, what are they, $100,000 each or something? It's a lot of money if it's not warranted. If we were going to do, if we determined that something was necessary and that's something we probably, we should definitely do before we do anything. But I liked Ms. Chenoweth's suggestion, sitting here, that's, I was thinking that if, that the problem, if there is a problem with cars actually not yielding to pedestrians in a striped crosswalk, yes, there are many people who just don't know. If you gave a rules of the road test and there were one of the questions, they would not know they're supposed to stop if it's a striped. And I don't know if people have noticed that it is. Just this morning, I crossed that nice pedestrian cross we have on Springfield Avenue between Wright and, what would that be, Romine? And now that, you know, it lights up, the whole thing. Although today it wasn't lighting up, but the sign above it lit up. But it's just the fact that it says, and I still was kind of nervous. Should I, should I step out? Do people know they're supposed to stop? But they stop because there's signs that say, "Stop if there's a pedestrian here". So I think something that's more informative than restrictive would be a lot better.
Seriously?
I just want, in dealing with the warrants for a signalization or signage of an intersection, it's not that the, that intersections are definitely safer with stop signs than without stop signs. The warrants are there to try to get the safest signage or lack of signage regardless of the intersection. And some, in some cases, no signage is the safest. And unless it meets the warrants for signage, then it's generally, through study after study after study across the nation, is generally accepted that it's safer without the sign than with it. Because as has been discussed, a lot of the time, we will see a very few number of pedestrians. And if every single car has to stop at a stop sign when only one time in a thousand they see a pedestrian, those signs tend to be ignored. And then it becomes an unsafe situation to have that stop sign there. And so it's not that simply by the addition of a stop sign that it's automatically safer. That's not the case. And we use the warrants because generally, the warrants tell you what the safest signage is at a particular intersection based on the traffic, the gaps, the pedestrian usage, and a variety of other factors that are thrown into the mix. So just, I know that a lot of people think that an addition of a stop sign is going to guarantee additional safety at an intersection, but that's just not the case. And so we need to be careful about, you know, where we put traffic signs. And we need to be particularly careful if we, as a council, decide to put in a traffic signal or a stop sign when it doesn't meet the warrants, because we are doing something that exhaustive studies have shown is more unsafe than having no signage.
Ms. Wyman?
Just a request that this issue, whether, as it's discussed at Traffic Commission, if you could let the person who contacted us on this letter, the Balgopal household, know about the meeting and that sort of thing? That would be great. Thank you.